Recording in progress.
It is 6:32 PM. Welcome to this March 27, 2025 Meeting of the Emeryville Planning Commission. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Chafe?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
Commissioner Rivera is absent. Commissioner Small?
Here.
Vice Chair Henme?
Here.
And Chair Wax?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, moving on to public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to make a public comment, they may come to the podium and they will have two minutes speaking time. Not seeing any public comment, and we did not receive any public comment, then I am closing public comment. Approval of action minutes, February 27, 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion?
On the motion, my Vice Chair Henme to approve the February 27, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes, seconded by Commissioner Small. I'll call the roll. Excuse me. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera is absent. Commissioner Small?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henme?
Aye.
And Chair Wax?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item five, Community Development Directors' Report.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to point out as we commence this meeting that Planning Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Planning Manager Mi Rude Sai sends her regrets that she was unable to attend this evening. She's at a critical American Planning Association Board Meeting, she's a board member, where they're going to address the Association's budget and the response to federal DEI directives. She's only missed like two or three meetings over 20 years. She plans her life around Planning Commission meetings. I'd like to acknowledge her for that because I really appreciate that dedication to the city of Emeryville. Quick council recap of actions since we last met on March 4. The council made appointments to various committees, including the appointment of Sam Gould to the Planning Commission. He will be sworn in at the next meeting. The council proclaimed March 2025 his American Red Cross Month and amended the fiscal '25 budget for the city. On March 18, the City Council received its annual reports from the Economic Development Advisory Committee and the Public Art Committee, proclaimed March 2025 as Women's History Month, and recognized Nellie Hannan for her contributions to the community, which was with an enormous amount of community support being expressed. It was a lovely time to see her recognized for everything she does with ECAP and in the broader community. They also approved a contract for new permitting software system, which is a big deal for us. That's going to be a long project and an arduous project, but is sorely needed and will give us the capability to work more efficiently as well as to be able to accept applications online, which we're unable to do currently. And I'm looking forward to implementing that. Finally, the council approved the General Plan and Housing Annual Reports as recommended by this commission and your February meeting. A few upcoming events to take note of. On March 31, there'll be a celebration of the Visual Art Grants Program grant recipient, Rachel Wolf Goldsmith's new mural at Fire Station 34. That's the fire station on Powell Street out across from Watergate. That'll be at 4:00 PM on March 31 and will include refreshments from the Alameda County Fire Department and an artist Q&amp;A session similar to what's going on out here this evening for the Purchase Award. There are two upcoming workshops to help inform the development of the design for the 40th Streetscape Public Art Component. One of them is on April 7 at 5:30 PM in conjunction with the BPEC Meeting. And the second is April 10 at 5:30 PM with the Public Art Committee. And these are paper cutting workshops. It's an engaging thing where we're working to develop an icon that'll be used across the project. So participants are encouraged to bring paper things that are meaningful to you, to be incorporated into the work that you do with the artist. Then finally, Healthy Families Festival is coming up on April 12 from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the ECCL. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? All right, closing the item. Disclosure of Ex parte Communications and Identification of Conflicts of Interest. I will go first. I'll be recusing myself from 7.1 as I live at 1121 Fortieth and am within 500 feet of the furthest extent of the sign program. Commissioners, any others? All right, with that said, I am closing this item and will be leaving the room.
And just to note for the record, Commissioner Rivera is now present. Thank you.
Good evening. As Vice Chair, I will act and take, lead the commission for this item, 7.1, which is the Total Wine &amp; More Signs Issue. First, well, we've already had conflict of interest. So I'll ask for the staff presentation, please.
Right. Good evening, Commissioners. I'll be presenting today on the Total Wine &amp; More Proposed Signage. So the site location is at 3938 Horton. As you'll recall, last year you approved a conditional use permit for liquor sales use at that site for Total Wine &amp; More. The site is located within East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, proximate to Watermark and the Bridge Apartment Complex. So just to zoom in a little further, within 3938 Horton, Total Wine &amp; More occupies just a portion of that building. There's not a tenant in the other part of that building. So you can see in yellow outline where that store is located. Just for some background, again, you approved a use permit for Total Wine &amp; More as a liquor sales use in that east tenant space. 3938 Horton is under separate ownership from the rest of the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, which has meant that while there is an approved master sign program that applies for the entire East Bay Bridge Shopping Center's tenants and site-wide signage, it doesn't actually apply to this particular property with a few notable exceptions that we'll discuss. So this major sign permit is subject to the general sign regulations of the planning code. So just to provide some context, this is the previous tenant signage for the site in the past. So you can see the use of that tower structure for tower signage for that individual tenant. Decathlon occupied that space in 2019 and has pretty similar scale and location of signage as what Total Wine &amp; More is proposing today. Again, some additional context for kind of the regional retail in East Bay Bridge and the scale of the signage that we see in that shopping center. And then a quick overview of the sign regulations. So the proposed signage does comply with the sign regulations. The maximum aggregate sign area allowed is one square foot of sign area per one linear foot of building frontage. For Total Wine &amp; More, they have about 519 linear feet of building frontage and are proposing 476 square feet of proposed sign area. The reason that a major sign permit is required is because both of the wall signs proposed are over 50 square feet. And one of those wall signs is intended to be mounted more than 25 feet above ground. So those are two things that trigger it. In addition, Total Wine &amp; More is proposing three signs on that tower structure and tower signage does require Planning Commission review. So the East Bay Bridge Master Sign Program was adopted in 2015 and it establishes some standards for East Bay Bridge's overall site signage. While it doesn't set design standards for the actual tenant signage at 3938 Horton, it does allocate specific sign areas within its site signage. Two pergola signs, one located at Hollis Street and one at San Pablo Avenue, and then two tower signs that are located on Hollis Street. So these individual signs under the Master Sign Program would again typically require zoning compliance review. But because these have been submitted as a total package for Total Wine &amp; More, we're contemplating them all under the major sign permit process. So these are the three site sign locations within the Master Sign Program where Total Wine &amp; More is allocated sign area. So those two pergola structures have blade signs attached to them. So they get one pergola sign on each of those structures. And then there are two tower sign plates on that tower sign at Hollis and they are also allocated that space. Again, the proposed signage for Total Wine &amp; More is onsite. Two wall signs, three tower signs, a monument sign, and then a temporary banner. Offsite, they intend to install both the pergola signs and the two tower signs. So for, this is the location of the proposed signage onsite. The monument sign, as you can see, is at the intersection of Horton and Mandela, which is located within the property bounds of 3938 Horton. So this is the first wall sign on the south-facing frontage, the main entryway. It's approximately 180 square feet. It will be mounted approximately 32 feet, measured from ground level to the top of sign. It will be illuminated and as is stated in our conditions of approval required, it will include a dimmer switch so it can be dimmed to the satisfaction of the director. The second wall sign will be located on the east elevation. It's 59 square feet. It's mounted about 20 feet above ground. It will also be illuminated. The three tower signs, I only have a visual here of the one on the south-facing side, but they're the exact same text and dimensions, basically. Each one is approximately 75 square feet each and they will be mounted approximately 56 feet above ground. This is, they will not be illuminated and they're pretty consistent in size with those of previous tenants. So Decathlon had three signs facing south, east, and west, just as Total Wine proposes. And each of those signs was 120 feet. And then Toys R Us had an east and a west-facing sign on that tower and both of those were about 72 square feet. So this is pretty typical use of that tower structure. And you can see those examples here. Total Wine &amp; More is also proposing, again, that monument sign at Mandela and Horton. There is an existing concrete podium that has been previously used by Decathlon for a similar monument sign. It will be 27 square feet and approximately three feet tall. As you can see, the monument sign area has been split into two sections. So one will be allocated towards Total Wine &amp; More and then one will be for a prospective tenant in the rest of 3938 Horton. So this will also be an illuminated sign and it's push-through text. So it's not, the entire background is not illuminated. And then there will be a temporary banner, which is about 30 square feet. It is reversible and per our sign regulations, it can be mounted for up to 90 days pending approval. So once, if you approve this sign permit, that 90-day countdown will start and they will have to remove it by the end of that period. For the offsite signage, which is reviewed under the Master Sign Program, there are again the two pergola signs as well as the tower signs. So the pergola structures, there will be installed two double-sided signs, one on Hollis Street and one on San Pablo Avenue. Each of those signs may be double-sided, up to seven square feet, matching those dimensions and with minimum clearance of nine feet. So it does meet the requirements of the Master Sign Program. So again, those are the locations and the installation structures for those. And then finally, the tower signs located offsite. There is an existing sign plate installed, so they will not have to consider that. And they will again be using half of the sign plate for Total Wine &amp; More and the other half will be allocated for the prospective tenant in the other part of 3938 Horton. So the major design review findings for signage are as follows. Proposed signs are necessary, that they are no larger than is necessary, that they comply with the planning regulations and design principles, that they are in keeping with the visual character of the area, that the signs are readable, and that they relate well to buildings and architectural features. In addition, the general design review findings are as follows. The design of the project is consistent with the general plan, including urban design goals and policies. The design conforms with Emeryville Design Guidelines. Project is of high design quality that is compatible with the surrounding area. So staff believes that we can make these findings as described in the staff report. And we do recommend that the Planning Commission approve the major sign application for Total Wine &amp; More, subject to the attached conditions of approval. I do have a representative from the sign installer here, so if you have questions for myself or for them.
Any questions from Commissioners?
I just have one question. For the tower that's on Hollis, is it contemplated that any future co-tenant of the space would also occupy signage on that tower? Not this tower, but the, sorry, the other tower. The one that's, that one. Yeah, the one that's connected to the building.
It's possible that they might. There would be, for some, that would be at the discretion of the property owner. If they did want to install additional tower signage on it, it would come back to Planning Commission for that applicant. I mean, we would also need to consider, again, that one square foot to one linear foot of frontage. That adjacent tenant space is smaller and does have a smaller frontage. So that would be something they would need to calculate.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any history of complaints or feedback from residents or other businesses in the area about signs? Any history with this area?
None that I'm aware of. I believe the dimmability requirement was not specific to East Bay Bridge, but was a response to concerns about the brightness of signs. So that's why we have included that. And so if we receive a complaint about the brightness, we can ask them to turn it down.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. And we'll ask the applicant for their presentation.
The applicant is not going to make a presentation, but they are available for questions and comments.
Then I have one question. I was, I think I know the answer, but I was wondering why there was no sign proposed at the corner of Horton and Fortieth? Is that because it's not the wall that's part of your property?
I'm Michelle Luparini representing Golden Gate Sign, Atlas Sign, and the tenant Total Wine. Yeah, they maxed out their sign, so they didn't feel like it was necessary to put one there.
Well, they actually didn't quite max it out. I see there's about 43 square feet left, which is probably large. That's where you have the sign for rent or for lease because it's a pretty prominent corner on Horton, facing west. And when you're driving down Fortieth, that's the wall you see. On the other hand, that wall is not part of Total Wines &amp; More because it's, Total Wines &amp; More is further east than that. So is that why, can you not use that wall?
You know, I don't have the answer to that. I can certainly find out. I mean, if there's good sign exposure for them, we would certainly want to use it.
Okay, well, you should consider that.
Can you come a little closer to the mic? Because, yeah, see, thank you so much.
43 square feet is still enough, I think, to have a smallish sign, but yes.
That's something that we certainly would consider.
Okay. I would think it's a very good location for a sign. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Hearing none, then we will open up the public hearing for this item, 7.1. Any, are there any members of the public who would wish to address this item? And you have a three-minute time limit if you wish to do so. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and begin commission deliberations. Commissioners?
I don't have any comments on this item. I'll move the resolution.
The resolution has been moved and seconded. Any comments?
Who was that?
I didn't hear the second. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. On the motion to approve the resolution for item 7.1, Total Wine &amp; More Signs, made by Commissioner Martinez and seconded by Commissioner Rivera, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Small?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henme?
Aye.
And Chair Wax is recused. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Can somebody let Chair Wax know that we're now available for him to continue?
I just texted him.
Okay.
All right, we are moving on to our study session, 8.1, the Rivian Study or Service Center.
All right, okay, so I'll be presenting on the Rivian Service Center for the study session today. This is the location of the proposed service center. It is made up of three individual parcels with three addresses at them. Let's see, let's go to the next page. So 1483, 1485, and 1499. And I'll be referencing them by address at various points in this presentation. So this faces along 67th Street, is just east of the railroad and Shell Mount Street. So this is the existing building. So this is 1483, the eastmost building. 1485 in the center. And then 1499, which is the westmost building. And then the edge of 1499, so that first picture is looking south from 67th Street. And then that second picture is looking north towards 67th Street, between the railroad and the building itself. So as I said, this site is made up of three parcels with three existing internally-connected warehouses, totaling approximately 61,775 square feet. This was the former site of Engine World, which was a wholesale distributor for vehicle parts. And they, I believe, no longer occupy the space at this time. There are currently separate encroachment and building permits under review for installation of ADA-compliant ramps on the site as well as a new sidewalk. This portion of 67th Street does not have a sidewalk, so that is part of the scope of the work they're doing under that encroachment permit. The Rivian Service Center would be considered a motor vehicle sales and service, repair and service use. What they've proposed here are tire changes, wheel alignment, hardware replacement, and software updates. They would also perform battery replacement as needed. However, they would not be doing any form of collision, body, or paintwork. So those more intense types of vehicle repair use would not occur on this site. The site would also include accessory office, storage, and parking uses. And any exterior changes made to the building would additionally require a design review. So the proposed hours of operation here are from Monday through Saturday. So with open customer hours from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Monday through Friday and from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturday. In addition to this, Rivian has proposed two shifts for actual operational hours for 30 employees from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. 30 employees from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and for 15 employees from 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., again, Monday through Saturday. And we'll be discussing this further later in the presentation. Per day, Rivian anticipates approximately 20 to 25 appointments, either made online or walk-ins, and anticipates anywhere from zero to two tow-ins per day. There would be up to 30 employees on-site at one time, up to four deliveries per day. And then customers would also be able to rent vehicles from Rivian's fleet or get rideshare services from the site. So here is kind of the use diagram showing how the uses are broken down within the site. So Rivian is proposing 60 spaces of on-site parking located within the building. As I said, these three warehouses are internally connected, so their intent is that any circulation occurs within the building. You can see here their circulation diagram of customer vehicles would arrive at 1483, that eastmost site. They would drop off their vehicles within that warehouse, and then staff would bring that, those vehicles internally. They're either to their parking area for temporary storage or directly into the service area, and then customers would, again, pick up the vehicle from 1483. So that's the kind of principal area of activity. Deliveries and tow-ins would happen within the service area of the site, as would waste pickup towards the west. So just to break down the parking numbers, again, Rivian is proposing 60 spaces located on-site. Thirty of these spaces would be allocated to employee parking, 25 to service parking, so storage of vehicles for pickup or that are still in need of servicing, and then five spaces for loner vehicles to be parked and picked up by customers. In addition, there would be four customer drop-off spaces, and 18 of those parking spaces would include EV chargers. So here's a closer look at the trash, or sorry, the site plan, showing in the service area the locations for hazardous material storage, tire storage, general trash, delivery loading space, as well as their long-term bike parking location. So again, there is a separate encroachment permit currently in process that includes two ramps located in the public right-of-way. It also includes installation of a new sidewalk along the entire frontage of this project, which is approximately 390 feet, I believe. That new sidewalk would range between six to 12 feet wide, and there would be an additional amenity strip approximately four feet wide, which is not calculated into that sidewalk width. In addition to that new sidewalk improvement, staff is proposing alongside this use permit, potentially up to four trees located fronting 1485 and 1499, as well as a landscaping strip in front of 1483. So some of the considerations that staff has put into this is there are three light poles located in front of this property. There needs to be a 15-foot buffer for any trees installed around that, so that is a limitation. There are a number of driveways that will be utilized on the site. And again, that is, you know, that puts some restrictions on where trees and landscaping can go. And then we also are considering the species that are recommended by our arborist from our tree list, as well as general hardiness and water use. In terms of traffic, Rivian anticipates that all parking for their use will occur on-site. Again, there will be up to 30 employees on the site at one time, up to 25 appointments, and up to five fleet vehicles. So they believe that the 60 parking spaces they've proposed will be adequate to address that without a need for off-site parking. Based on the trip generation data for automobile care centers, they anticipate that per day they'll, this use will generate approximately 139 trips during weekday peak hours in the morning, 192 trips during PM peak hours, and then 176 trips on Saturdays. Comparatively, the, the traffic consultant did look at estimated trips generated by Engine World, which is, again, a wholesale distributor, and they've assigned them kind of a mix of general light industrial uses as well as automobile care center, and it is a comparable use to what has existed on the site previously. Additionally, the traffic consultant collected traffic counts from the following intersections on January 16th and January 18th, so that's a Thursday and Saturday. So at the intersection along Ashby, at Shellmand and 67th, at 67th and Hollis, and at 66th and Hollis. So they performed what is called a level of service analysis, which is based on the estimated trip generation, the traffic count, and specifically the turn counts at each of those intersections, and the pattern of signalization at each of those intersections. And per the traffic report, they believe that the Rivian Service Center would not impact level of service and would not increase the delay at each intersection by more than a second per vehicle. Terms of conformity to the planning regulations, this site is located in the heavy industrial zoning district, while vehicle repair and service is considered to be a use of special concern. It would typically require a minor conditional use permit in this zoning district. However, because we have heard comments from the public and from the planning commission about understanding electric vehicle uses and some concerns about their operations, that's why we have decided to bring it as a major conditional use permit. It is also in the North Hall's overlay. There will be no expansion of the existing buildings on-site, so no change to the floor area ratio or building height. The auto parking requirement, the maximum is actually 11, and they have proposed 60, so you would need to make additional findings at a public hearing to allow an increase in the amount of parking allowed. They would be required to play, provide three short-term and three long-term bicycle parking spaces and two medium off-street loading spaces. They've shown one on-site and may show another in the future unless a modification is granted by the planning commission to reduce that amount. Some additional considerations, we have not received any public comments on this project thus far. It was reviewed by the Development Committee on March 12th, 2025, and we did receive some comments from Building, Fire, and Public Works. From Building, there is just requests for additional information and some clarifications on building requirements that traditionally relate to combustion engines versus battery vehicles, and how Rivian intends to approach those when they apply for the building permit. Similarly, Fire has requested or identified additional information that will be required at the time of the building permit application. And then Public Works had some questions about the potential for undergrounding of existing power lines at the site, as well as potential site improvements in that space located on the property that's between the building and the railroad. So you can see here, that's that little space between the building and the railroad. It's approximately 10 feet wide. As part of separate building permit, they are installing another ADA compliant ramp within that. So you can see the area not highlighted yellow is where that ramp will go, but there is some additional space along that side of the property. In terms of hazardous materials, again, they will be replacing batteries as needed, and there would be temporary battery storage on-site. In addition, Rivian has included a list of hazardous materials that will be stored on-site that is included as part of the staff report attachments. These would all be stored and disposed of in a dedicated portion of the service area. And staff would also include a standard condition of approval that requires Rivian to provide a hazardous materials management plan prior to issuing a building permit, and that would be reviewed by both Building, Fire, and Planning Staff. In addition, both ACFD and Stop Waste do their own monitoring outside of the city's jurisdiction. In terms of fire, again, there's battery replacement and temporary battery storage on-site, as well as tire storage on-site. Flammable materials must be stored in accordance with fire code requirements, so for example, in safety cabinets or, you know, in accordance with fire suppression requirements. Batteries would not be stored on-site for more than 48 to 72 hours, and storage and fire suppression procedures would be subject to building and fire code before operations can begin. And then finally, for noise, so Rivian has proposed that second shift, which starts at 5:00 p.m. and ends at 2:00 a.m. from Monday to Saturday, and all repair work would occur indoors. So the noise ordinance, there's two places basically that noise is regulated in our municipal code. So the noise ordinance prohibits the falling after 9:00 p.m., a general requirement of excessive or annoying noise, and then also specifically sustained truck idling or the repair of any automobile. The planning regulations also have set specific noise requirements. They set a threshold of 70 decibels during daytime hours and 60 decibels during nighttime hours. So Rivian has reported that their loudest equipment that they will be using on-site is an air compressor, which is rated at 67 dBA, compared to what they consider to be the noise of a standard combustible engine repair center, which is closer to 90 decibels. Staff considers that reference to sustained truck idling, as well as the age of that, the noise ordinance, to reflect predominantly a concern with combustible engines distinguished from electric vehicles, which were not considered at the time of adoption. So the Rivian's use would be subject to the noise thresholds, as well as the excessive or annoying noise rule. And we would also be able to put in conditions of approval to, for work to occur behind closed doors. We could also include a condition of approval that restricts the use permit to electric vehicles only. So the findings that you will need to make are as follows. Then you will also need to make a finding to allow parking spaces above the maximum, which are, additional parking is required to meet the demand, and it will not result in an over-dependence on cars or adversely affect transit, bike, or pedestrian access. So we're asking you to consider, do you have any concerns or questions regarding Rivian's request for that second shift? Do you believe that you can make the required findings for the proposed use permit and additional parking? Do you agree with city comments regarding the sidewalk landscaping? And do you have any other feedback regarding the proposed use permit? I do have some representatives from Rivian who will be making a brief presentation.
Good evening. The mouse. There we go. Good evening. My name's Carolina. I'm the Regional Development Lead for the West Coast, and this is Zach. Zach, if you want to introduce yourself.
Yeah, good evening, Council. Zach Ryburn, the real estate representative for Rivian this evening.
We are here to talk to you about our vision for the Emeryville Service and Sales Center on 67th Street. We're really excited about this location. It gives us an opportunity to revitalize three existing buildings on that street. When we are thinking about where we're building and communities we're coming to, we're looking for ones that share similar values that we have. And so we feel like Emeryville absolutely shares a lot of values with sustainability and innovation, and so for that reason and alone, we feel like we're, this would be a really great fit for us. We're also just looking to be good neighbors and look for a long-term relationship with, with the community and contributors. Just go to the next slide and share a little bit about who we are and what we do. So Rivian is, as you know, an all-electric vehicle company. We design and manufacture all our cars. We have a R1T, which is a truck, an R1S, which is the SUV, and then we also have the RCV, which is the commercial van. In March, let me get this out of the way. In March, we did reveal our R2 and R3, which are our new models, and we're very excited about, more compact, more accessible. And so just another reason why we are excited to grow and be a part of Emeryville and support customers who will hopefully be purchasing those vehicles. And then just a few photos of some of our existing spaces and what you can expect at this location as well. The center photos here, the top one is from South San Francisco Service Center, and then the one below is from our San Jose Service Center. And as you can see, they're pretty organized, bright, and clean, and that's due to just operationally trying to be efficient, also a reflection, I think, of just the vehicle and who we are. We also care deeply about our customers and our employees equally, so creating bright, comfortable spaces, quality materials, lots of light. And then some exterior photos on the left, which show, you know, they're, they're very modest, but also neutral in tone and, and keeping signage simple and clean. So that's a bit about what our spaces are like. And then I'll let Zach talk about, a little bit more about Emeryville and why we.
Yeah, so I'm sure you're a little bit curious about why Emeryville, among some of the reasons that Carolina has listed already. So I want to start at the kind of 3,000-foot view here of the Bay Area in general. Northern California specifically is an extremely important market for Rivian. You know, our business is here, our customers are here, our demographics are here. Currently, we have locations in San Francisco, South San Francisco, and San Jose that are open and operating today. Later this year, we'll have Hayward that'll come online, that's just south of here, so about 10 miles south. We'll have Martinez come online, that's just north of here. Beyond that, we have a lot of expansion plans for the market, Marin County, Contra Costa County, and then the peninsula as well. So our, our market coverage will be, will be there for sure. But in, in speaking about Emeryville, I've, I've kind of had my eyes on the community for, for quite some time. You know, I had reached out and spoken to the development, economic development team, you know, kind of early on in the process. So we were very excited when we kind of discovered, let's say, the, the buildings on 67th. And layer on top of that, that it was previously a company called Engine World, it, we, we salivate a little bit, right? That's a great opportunity for us to take a building, you know, the way it was used, and, and turn it into something, you know, more sustainable and a more representation of the brand and probably a better use for the city. The tenants around that area as well, that, that, you know, you have gotten to come to your city are great co-tenants for us. So I think we actually would fit, fit in very well at the location. With that building comes the need for a conditional use permit, so that's why we're here today is to discuss that. We really appreciate actually the venue that you've given us and a kind of a study session to come here, have this conversation, hear your concerns and your comments, be able to address those. A little bit about kind of what the service center does, and I think that's important. The photos are a great explanation, but it's very important to know that, that this is light vehicle service. You know, that we don't do collision or paint or, or any bodywork. You know, I always make the joke that the techs dress better than I do, not, not tonight maybe, but, you know, usually. So we're talking about, I think it's listed here, tire changes, wheel alignments, hardware replacements, door handles, windshield's, wiper fluid replacement, and then obviously a lot of software updates that we do as well. Antillery to that service is we are seeking the approval to have and be able to operate at some form of a sales functions and have sales activities at the site. It's critical for our business, as, as you're well aware, and I think some of the effort that you all have put into your zoning code is that EVs sell vehicles very differently than the OEMs do. We sell our vehicles online, they are delivered and picked up, you know, in person at a site. You can, there's no pressure, you're not negotiating for eight hours at a dealership. You know, you get to pick up. You know, you get to pick out colors and everything and then go pick it up. So we are seeking the ability to have some sales functions at this site as well, since it is critical. Staff already touched on this, but we thought it was important to add to the presentation today is that although there is the work currently going on to the sidewalk improvements outside of the space, we are working towards a landscaping plan with staff. Currently proposed at the forestry locations as well as the landscaping strip in front of fourteen eighty-three.
And I know you guys have already seen this plan a couple of times, but just overall, just wanted to go through quickly. The majority of the project in the green color would be our service center on the left. On the right would be our customer-facing space where customers would intake the vehicles. They could drop off the car and sit in the lounge while they wait for their vehicle to be serviced. Or they can take a loner vehicle, Uber credits as mentioned earlier, and take the car out on the left side of that space there. And then the center part would be for employee and service vehicle parking only. So customers would not be going in there. And of course, we're trying to maintain all of the circulation within the building. So that way, we're not creating much, you know, distraction or issues outside with going in and out of the garage constantly. So you can see when Alyssa shared, you know, the circulation path, I think you can visualize that a lot of that was maintained inside the space. And then these are our elevations. We are just primarily utilizing the existing architecture, looking to probably unify the color of the paint of the building and then, you know, our signage, our wordmark on each side of the building. There are overhead doors, and you'll notice they're all solid. They would help maintain keeping the noise inside. All the work is happening inside the building on the right side. Or sorry, the west elevation, you'll see there is an overhead door that actually will be going away. I think if you go to site today, you can see that's already removed. And then, of course, you're not seeing the landscape on this drawing, but as Zach mentioned, we'll have the landscape on the north elevation. And that's about it. That concludes our presentation. So thank you for taking the time, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for the presentations, Commissioners. Go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. These are exciting plans. I think that these buildings are well situated for this use. I have a question. You've got operating service centers that are like this one that you proposed. Can you talk about any additional above and in excess of fire and safety code, fire suppression that was instituted at your existing service centers? Because that is an issue that has been brought up in our community regarding specifically automotive batteries.
Yeah, so we have to meet, obviously, the code requirements for our spaces and our use type. So we have also to meet NFPA thirteen for sprinklers. And all of our service centers have that condition met. And this location as well will have the sprinklers meeting those conditions. And I think we checked recently, and they're already sized appropriately to do that. Does that answer your question?
So NFPTA, NFPA thirteen is the requirement.
They have, I mean, there's requirements we have to meet, to meet NFPA thirteen. And sizes and sprinkler head types, et cetera, and to meet code as well. So city jurisdictional codes.
Okay, I guess the question that I'm trying to get to is that have any of these jurisdictions asked you to go above and beyond code in terms of fire suppression plans?
Not that I am aware of, and I'm not sure if you are aware of.
No, I think surprisingly enough, some jurisdictions at a certain square footage actually do not require sprinklers. I know that's shocking to me too, right? So the answer is we haven't had, you know, any requests to increase above what we're meeting. As long as the water volume is there, water is the best way to handle any form of a fire, right? It's, no matter what kind of fire it is, water is the way to, you know, to take care of that. I think it's also important to note, because I know that obviously in EV business, everyone continually talks about batteries, right? So I think I can kind of like run you through that. So this is a service center, right? So we are performing light service. You know, we're actually coming to tonight's meeting kind of curious about, you know, certain things. If there's anything that's ever happened to Rivian, right? Is there anything ever happened? At our service centers, we've, God forbid, I shouldn't even say this out loud, right? We've never had an issue with a fire at a service center actively. As far as battery replacements go, it is just a replacement of that battery, right? So there is no work being done to any of the cell of the battery or anything. That is a clean swap. Batteries are ordered upon request. They show up when they're ready, when the vehicle's ready. It's taken out of a crate, installed into the vehicle. The old battery is installed into that crate, and then it's sent out the same day.
Okay, thank you, because, yeah, you might be aware that these issues came up in a previous application, which was a collision center where batteries might be damaged.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's also important to note that was in our operational statement also that Rivians have a battery management system, EMS, that's in the vehicle. So before a vehicle is ever taken in for service or reviewed by a service tech, that's checked in on. So no battery with any type of damage would ever be accepted at a service center because they couldn't do anything with that battery. So that vehicle would then be sent somewhere else. That's a good way to protect, right, from intaking a vehicle where you might have an issue.
My question, and maybe both to staff and to the applicant, is about the front area. That is, will there be no parking in the front of the buildings then?
So currently, the tenants are actually parking head in, as you're aware, right? So we're excited about the new sidewalk as well. I do not, I do not believe that's a no-parking zone. I think it's a regular parking curb.
Yeah, but in order to get the cars in, I think you have to overlap the sidewalk. So staff, will there be a prohibition against parking in that front zone?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm happy to check what the conditions of the encroachment permit will be when that sidewalk gets installed. But again, there will be a number of curb cuts and driveways to enter the site.
Right, and if there's parking, it changes the whole thing because now it's a continuous curb cut with cars backing out into traffic, et cetera, et cetera. And given, so anyway, that's a comment, sorry. Second question is, is there accessible parking that you're providing?
I believe, no.
Okay. Third question is, this, it looks like you've removed one of the overhead doors on the west, but you're keeping the southernmost overhead door. Can that also be removed?
That is already actually blocked up, so it's on an old, you're looking at an old elevation. If you were to drive by the property today, that's blocked up and will be closed off.
Blocked up with solid wall?
CMU and then painted over, yeah.
I see. Okay, good.
Anything along the, I think that would be the southern or western portion of the building will be.
Okay. From your existing facilities, have you received noise complaints? Because the late hour issue is very much about noise. Any at all?
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of facilities. We have seventy-one active in.
In the Bay Area.
Oh, in the Bay Area? I think I'm going to answer that question. We'll answer that for you because I don't know offhand, and I don't want to misspeak that if we've ever received any type of complaint. So we will get that information.
Okay. And let's see. One of the recommendations from the fire marshal was he recommended hiring an FPE, a fire professional, I forget the term. Are you willing to do so?
I believe that was for fire protection, and we always have that as a deferred submittal, meaning they hire the engineering team and contractor, like, when we start construction. That's typically how we do it. But if this is something that we need to hire in advance, I think it's reasonable, if I'm understanding that that is the requirement.
I think that's what it was, you know, probably not a deferred submittal, I would think. But it was in the comments from the fire marshal.
Yeah, we would be definitely willing to talk about it with them and understand better what the, why, what the drive is and do it if it's necessary.
And the last question is for staff. This issue that car repair is not allowed after nine PM, then what does that mean for the planning commission in terms of action? What has to be, what action taken in order? What exactly, was that zoning code that didn't allow it? Or municipal code, what was that requirement?
It is, it is not in the planning regulations. It is in the noise ordinance, which I believe is the public welfare code.
And therefore, if this violates that, what has to happen for it to be allowable?
I can take that question, sure. So the municipal code does establish those noise performance standards. The municipal code obviously is a little behind the times in terms of its treatment of auto uses generally. And you may know that City Council actually just updated a significant portion of its auto-related uses, regulations related to auto uses to prohibit, you know, kind of new ones and stuff like that. So we're, it appears to staff that our interpretation here is that the noise ordinance that prohibited auto repair overnight is, does not prohibit this type of auto repair use because it is not a noise-producing use. The, you can, if you read the provision of the municipal code, it says sustained truck idling or the repair of any automobile may only occur between certain hours, seven AM to nine PM. This type of auto repair use doesn't have sustained truck idling. So staff interprets the noise ordinance to prohibit a different kind of auto repair, the traditional auto repair that has noise associated with it, idling engines. We don't have that here. So staff is interpreting that this proposal is consistent with our noise ordinance.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you for the presentations. You've answered some of my questions already, but I have more. So first question is about batteries. So do you have an estimate of about the number of batteries that would be onsite at any one time, recognizing that they're being rotated every few days?
So there's no estimate of batteries onsite because they're not held or stored onsite. I think the best reference point that we have is how many times does a battery swap happen against our other service events, other things, other activities that we're doing at the site? So we actually tracked down that number before this evening. Point four percent of service activities involve a battery swap. So it's very, it's very few in consideration to everything else that we're doing at the site.
Okay, so if you're having twenty-ish appointments a day, you might be doing like one battery swap a day on average.
I don't have a calculator, but.
We have our operations manager here. I think she knows the answer.
Hello, my name is Flada. I'm a regional manager, acting regional manager for the Bay Area. I did want to.
You put your right into the mic. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm to tell for it. We do expect approximately forty to forty-five battery swaps to occur throughout the year. And this is also based on data to similar-sized service centers across all of the West Coast. So we don't even expect any overlap in batteries to occur.
Thank you, that's really helpful. That definitely gives me a good sense of order of magnitude. Let's see. One question I had, this is just kind of a small question, but in the staff report, there was a note that said, "As Rivian vehicles run on batteries, the service center would not generate exhaust or particulate matter associated with a combustion engine." And I just wanted to clarify, do you expect that all employees who are parking inside are driving electric vehicles? No.
No, we do not.
Okay, so I think we might just need to make a little note of that because it is, I think it's a fair generalization, but I think it is a generalization that there would be some fumes being produced from the parking inside. Next question, there were two questions posed from the Public Works Department. One was about whether undergrounding existing power lines would be feasible or if the new sidewalk can be made underground ready. Have you thought about that, any response to that yet?
So the sidewalk permit is under the landlord and not a part of the work that we're performing to the site. The existing electrical components that are in all three addresses actually are going to be reused. So I think for us as a tenant, we couldn't necessarily consider that type of an upgrade unless it was being passed through to the ownership of the property.
I can just add to that as well. So for a project of this scale, which is occupation of an existing building with just interior tenant improvements but no expansion of the actual structure or no substantial additional electrical connections, we would typically not be able to require undergrounding because that is a substantial amount of work for the scope of the project.
Okay, how about the underground-ready aspect of it? Because there is being construction done to the sidewalk. Is that also not within the scope of that improvement?
I honestly, I honestly don't know too much about that. And that's something that we can certainly explore and speak to Public Works about what specifically underground-ready sidewalks involves.
Great, okay. And then the second point was around the site improvements to the western portion of the site, that little tiny bit next to the railroad. So it sounds like that's also outside of the work that you're doing, this permit. Do you have any reaction to that yet from the landlord?
We actually received that comment just as I was finishing the staff report, so I have not had that much time to explore it yet.
Okay, fair enough. Let's see, so taking into account that there won't be batteries stored onsite and no collision-affected vehicles, do you still have a plan for like a quarantine area in case you did identify any sort of an issue with a vehicle that could potentially endanger other vehicles in the center?
So right now, because we are in early concepts, nothing like that has been identified. But part of our environmental health and safety plan would be to identify a zone that's safe enough for a vehicle to be held in the event that there was some concern about a thermal event.
Okay.
So right now, no.
So that would come later. In terms of the vehicles that are being provided from this site, so I guess there's sort of two pieces that I understand for that. One is that people who are dropping off their cars might be provided with a vehicle in the meantime. Is that, and I don't know if that's a rental agreement or a perk, but is there any sort of other rental that would be happening? Or is it just to people who are dropping off their cars?
Yeah, that's purely a perk. We'll have, I think, four fleet vehicles are what we call them. So kind of like a courtesy vehicle, if you're driving around and you see someone has that big in the back. Ours don't have that. But we'll have four fleet vehicles onsite. Beyond that, we offer Uber and Lyft credits if they need to go somewhere while they're waiting for their vehicle.
Great, okay. And then I'm trying to wrap my head around the sales function of this space as well. So you mentioned that sales are done online. Vehicles, do they get dropped off at this site for pickup? Or are they delivered to customers at their home? How does that work?
So this is the interesting component here with the Emeryville proposed location is right now, we don't have sales added to our operations day one. So currently contemplated, we don't have a full, like, sales operation that we're adding. However, we would like to keep two staff onsite to be able to speak to sales, to folks if they were to come in or need to speak about a vehicle. We don't want to turn anyone away. Deliveries for Northern California will mainly happen at our Milpitas site, which I believe was just recently approved. So that'll probably happen in about a year. That location will be up and running. Having the ability to do deliveries out of here would be nice, but I think building charact- the ability to do deliveries out of here would be nice, but I think building characteristics itself would, you know, become an operational issue for us, so we're very unlikely to do that. It's more so being able to speak about sales and save a price to somebody without, you know, violating a sales license law or anything like that.
Got it. Yeah, I just, I was bringing that up in case there was a situation where you would have like a truck full of Rivians pull up in front and off of the Rivians. So, it sounds like that's not expected right now because it would mostly go out of Milpitas.
Correct, correct.
Sure that could happen.
Correct.
We do also, just I want to point out, offer demo drives or educational drives, and so we might have one or two vehicles on-site and our staff would offer that to customers as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Question about the building. So, I saw a lot of pictures with lots of windows, very light and airy-looking, which is not the current configuration of this building, I think, having never been inside it. What we see on the screen now, is that a representation of what you expect the exterior would look like unfinished, or would there be more windows?
We're not looking to add more windows. There are skylights. I want to mention the building, the building that's customer-facing. If you look in the plan, there is an alleyway between the two buildings and lots of windows that offer lots of light coming in. So, we would utilize that and keep that exposed, and I think it's going to create a really beautiful space, kind of similar to some of those other photos where the customers are like coming in to the building.
Okay, yeah. How much of the internal parking do you think would be used for employee parking versus for the vehicles being serviced, the service fleet, et cetera?
I think we are, we have thirty, I want to say thirty employee parking stalls to match the amount of parking we need for all employees, and then the rest would be for service vehicles.
And then, I think the last question I had is for staff, and it's similar to one of the questions that was asked before, but just trying to visualize what it looks like after the sidewalk goes in. Are there any plans for striping bike lanes? So, it would be kind of changing that configuration of where the asphalt ends and the curb begins because right now people are parking parallel, not parallel but perpendicular. So, it seems like there might be an opportunity to kind of change the experience on the street there.
Yeah, again, I think certainly something I could check in with public works about. Again, this encroachment process is being processed separately and was done as part of the landlord's initial improvements to the site. So, I don't know that that was contemplated at the time because we didn't know that Rivian was going to be moving into the space at that time, frankly.
And actually, I just have one more question, which is, is there any consideration of providing public chargers at this site?
Unfortunately, there's actually no location to do that because we would have to somehow put them at the exterior of the building and that would be impossible. So, all the charging at this location will be internal and actually not even customer-facing because the customers will be giving us their vehicles, so it's up to us to charge it. So, there won't be any public charging here.
Thanks, that's the end of my questions.
That looks like the end of questions from commissioners. I'm going to go ahead and open up to public, wait, oh, you did?
Yes.
Oh, dear. That wasn't the end of questions, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much for the presentation. A couple of questions. One is also for city folks. Is there any transportation demand management required for projects? Any kind of plan for other supportive measures beyond driving and parking?
In terms of requirements of the planning code, there are not. Typically, we do request for uses like this that would generate traffic, that they do a traffic report, and if we find from the traffic report that there will be substantive impacts, that's kind of when we would ask for a specific like TDM type process.
Right, like mitigation. And I assume, is the bicycle parking something that has been offered by the applicants, or is it something that's-
So, the bicycle parking specifically is required. We do have pretty stringent bicycle parking requirements.
I also have a question about the building. I think it's, which one is it? It's the middle one, where you have a lot of parking on the inside, that's internal parking, it looks like it's internally organized. Do you have actual, are you going to be utilizing those driveways? Yeah, it's exactly, it's where the vehicle parking is. Is that going to be utilized? So, it looks like you don't have arrows indicating things going in and out, but there's some diagrams around how that, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so we're trying to limit having the ICE vehicles, the combustion vehicles, enter this space, this space. So, we would have those vehicles go in and out of here and use-
So, they will be using those driveways as well? Okay. So, basically, you're using all of the access points as they are? And then, I guess my only other question is really to the issues of the sidewalk and parking adjacent to it. I mean, it looks like there's, with the sidewalk improvements, it's really a question of curb management and what will be along the curb, whether it will be perpendicular, whether it would be parallel parking, whether there would be, I assume this is a standard curb with driveways, so you could not bring a vehicle, you'd have to really intentionally bring a vehicle up on the curb, right? So, that eliminates worries of that. This is a really important pedestrian corridor, it's an access point to Aquatic Park, and that is being used more and more. It's used a lot by pedestrians. It's not a great access to Aquatic Park, so, you know, anything that can facilitate and make it more safe for pedestrians and bicyclists would be great.
With the bike parking, I don't have any questions, thank you for your presentation, but with the bike parking, if you don't think that it might be utilized by employees, I know that it's a requirement from the zoning ordinance. You have vehicles for rent for folks as they drop off and Uber vouchers. Maybe having bikes to rent while people wait for their cars to get service would be a good use for those spaces as well.
Yeah, it's a great idea and thought, definitely something you can look into.
Any further questions, commissioners? Seeing none, I am now going to open it to public comment. Thank you so much. If any members of the public wish to comment at this time, you'll have two minutes. You can approach the podium. And not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and return it to comments, commissioners. Anyone like to comment on this item?
So, as I mentioned before, we've seen an application in the past for a servicing collision center on 67th Street, but that was east of Hollis, and I think the zoning is slightly different and the conditions of the neighborhood are slightly different. In this neighborhood, west of Hollis, it's not as close to some sensitive uses like condos and the senior center. So, I think this is actually an ideal use for this building, seeing as how it was Engine World, which was a company that was aimed to provide services to internal combustion engines. It's nice to see it potentially turn over to a sustainable use, so I'm excited about that. I did, however, as Commissioner Henme also noted, notice that our deputy fire marshal, regardless of the, you know, and actually did the calculation with the, you submitted the hazardous materials list that, and I did the math with how many pounds of batteries stored there was equivalent to like two-car batteries. So, it's, the amount of batteries in my imagination, as I had read the, this agenda item, was more than I understood when I got here. So, thank you for clarifying that this is not a place where damaged batteries especially would be stored. However, given that, our deputy fire marshal still recommended retention of a fire protection engineer's analysis, and that's something that I would like to take seriously because he probably found other reasons for that, which I am not an expert in fire suppression, so I don't know how combining, you know, these three buildings, what might have gone into his thought process into understanding what the risks might be. So, I would like to encourage the applicant to go ahead and take that advice and retain a fire protection engineer. I wouldn't necessarily go so far as to include it in the condition of use permit, that that all, that every suggestion be committed to. I'd like to give the applicant the flexibility to go over all of whatever is indicated from that report with the fire protection engineer, with Alameda County Fire Department, and with city staff, and come to some reasonable safety measures regarding the building. I think that would be very nice. Otherwise, I am very pleased with the possibility of this company coming to town. I think it would be a great addition to our business community, a great addition to that neighborhood, which I am in every single day. And, yeah, I look forward to seeing how this project progresses.
Thanks again for the presentation. So, I want to echo a lot of things that Commissioner Martinez said. I think that the fact this is heavy industrial zone rather than light industrial, it makes it a much more appropriate location in our city. In addition, the residential units that are the closest located to this are arguably upwind, given the prevailing winds, rather than downwind. And there is no painting or body or collision work proposed. Those are big differences from other items that we've heard before. The company states today that they are willing to be good neighbors, they're excited about being good neighbors, and I think that this presentation today and the application materials that have been submitted so far show that. So, for example, the traffic study that was submitted was done seriously, based on observations in Emeryville, done very recently, and leads to logical conclusions. One thing I wanted to mention is that, and this doesn't affect my direction on this at all, but I just thought it was interesting, it's that, you know, this is a service center, but it also does have the vehicle purchasing aspect, and there is a wash bay and detailing inside, which does amount to, you know, some aspect of car washing, which I think was prohibited by the city at some point. But I don't see this as necessarily, like, it's not like somebody's going to be bringing their car there to wash their car. So, it seems consistent to me, even though there will be a few different items of service happening in the same building. In terms of the future direction for the improvements, which again, I understand are outside of what we're speaking about today, but related to it, I do think that it would be great if staff could look into the items that we talked about in terms of access by bikes in this area, and then also the possibility of installing public charging infrastructure, if that ever became a possibility. I think it could be a nice addition to that area. And as we contemplate whether there are things that could be feasible in the small space to the west side of the buildings along the railroad tracks, just throwing some things out there, I think you could do a pollinator garden, you could have public art in that area. I know we've had another mural that went in over that direction recently too. So, it would be really exciting, especially given the fact that it is on the access point to Aquatic Park, which we know as the Ashby Interchange is redone, is going to become even more popular and a crucial bike and pedestrian way. I think there are some opportunities there. The only thing that gives me pause right now is the number of employee parking spaces. So, I think we have thirty employees and thirty spaces, and that is inconsistent with most other applications that we see in Emeryville these days. So, it would be really nice to see some more information about how Rivian is encouraging employees to arrive in ways other than cars, especially in internal combustion engine cars. And, yeah, just, you know, what your thoughts are on how that could be managed, or if there are other ways that the impacts on the neighborhood could be lessened in that regard. I will stop there.
Just to follow along that, you know, certainly the issues of transportation demand management, I think could be really a great opportunity to meet the needs both of Emeryville and of your customer base. I mean, for example, having e-bikes that can be used by people who are dropping off their vehicles. It's a fifteen-minute ride to West Oakland Bar, to MacArthur Bar, to, you know, Ashby Bar. Like, this is all very accessible environment. So, just really going above and beyond what the requirements might be. Thirty spaces feels like a lot. This is a very transit-friendly environment. There are many bus stops that are very close by. There's a real opportunity to kind of really show and demonstrate a commitment to those kinds of sustainable trips. So, I would really love to see that. Any kind of justification around the additional parking would really need to be, in my sense, balanced out with a lot of other opportunities. And that's a really common thing with dropping your car off. You drop your car off and you need to get somewhere. And, you know, yes, you can use one of your vehicles that might be available, but there's so many other ways to do it. And Emeryville really prides itself in developing those systems. So, I would really like to see that as an opportunity.
Thank you for your presentation, and like other commissioners, I'm also very sympathetic to this proposal. It's great to have an EV car company working in this, and I think it's important to maintain the industrial, the mixed-use character of Emeryville and have these industrial spaces that continue to be industrial. So, I think that's all great. I think the frontage to the north, I recommend that staff really look at that, and it's true, if it's a ninety-degree curb and you can't pull up onto it, then that will probably eliminate the ninety-degree park, perpendicular parking, but it should not be allowed. The perpendicular parking should not be allowed in front of this building anymore with this new usage. And so, that would, because that's what destroys totally the whole front as a safe place to drive, park, walk, et cetera. So, that's one thing, that's more of a city and owner relationship, I'm sure. The west wall, in terms of noise, the west wall is the wall that's most concerning, and it sounds like one of the former overhead doors is filled in, but the other overhead door is now being replaced by a man door, is that correct? So, I would make sure that that's a highly-rated sound, you know, CMU or something equivalent for the rest of the opening. Because then, then if the west wall is very, very solid, then the noise transfer to the residents across the street will be much improved. I would think that code would require accessible parking for staff, and I think you should have that. It looks like there is one accessible parking for the persons dropping off the cars, so for the, for the people getting work. The research, I would like you to come back and you, about the, whether there have been noise complaints in the Bay Area from your other facilities, particularly from after nine o'clock. So, if you could just provide a response to that, please. The FPE recommendation, I would actually include it in a conditions of approval. I mean, I think we're talking a few thousand dollars to have such a report done. It's not a big deal. So, I think that's something that has been recommended by our fire marshal, and it makes good sense to me. But otherwise, I think it's a, it's a good proposal, and I also, I really look forward to having at least one side of the street where you can walk or ride your bike because right now, both sides are really horrible, and I do use that street a fair amount. So, you know, there'll be semis parked in the middle of the street, there's, you know, there's, the entire street frontage has no walks, it's all curb-cut because everybody's parking perpendicular. So, I think that will start the changing of the rest of the street, hopefully. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a clarification that I would require the analysis from an FPE, but I would not necessarily, without staff, Alameda County Fire, and the applicant all coming together first, put the recommendations of the analysis into the conditions of approval. Unless, unless, you know, there was agreement that these are things that needed to happen. I don't want to proactively constrain the applicant if they have a good reason to object to any particular recommendation.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and thank you commissioners for all your questions and comments. You covered a lot of great ground and pretty much took away all my questions, so that's great. I agree with so much of- I agree with so much of what has been said already. It is unfortunate that it doesn't sound like we're going to be able to get utilities undergrounded as part of that, but I understand that. I think, as the point has been made and could be made much more elaborately, this is a much more important active transportation corridor than it looks right now. This is not a street or intersection that looks like, you know, you're heading to, our waterfront in one direction are already successful despite the fact that it's, you know, basically half-built public market in the other direction, or Greenway in the other direction, and the, one of the best pedestrian amenities around here, also in Aquatic Park to the north. This is stuff that, as enhancements that have been mentioned come through, as well as a lot of, you know, growth that's going to happen, are going to become much more popular. And right now, this is one of those spots where it kind of feels like you've come to the end of things, regardless of which direction you come in. It's hard to diverse to the west, it looks very uninviting northbound and southbound, and so, having this location revitalized and looking a lot fresher is going to be very important. I know, looking at it, to me, one of the things that is missing the most in this area, other than shade, which unfortunately, this is just an area that is naturally kind of wide open, and there's only so much we can do about it, there's just not green in general. So, one of the things that would be great to explore is whether or not it's possible to get a green wall on the west side and really strike a blow for greenness in a big way. I would love to see bigger trees than apparently we're going to be able to do while these utility poles are in place, so there's some limitations there, but a combination of greening and public art, and of course, just, you know, refreshing the place, making it active, making it actually active business will do a lot. The sidewalk enhancements are badly, badly needed. The changes to parking configuration are badly needed. You know, this is an area that people are going to be filtering through from many different directions, and it is also on the west face. You know, this is a building that's facing Amtrak riders, whether those are Amtrak riders who are commuting, or they are taking our iconic Emeryville-to-Chicago route, or whatever it is. And I do think it's important what kind of face we put forward towards all of those elements, especially if you are an electric vehicle company that believes in your ecological mission, it's very obvious to most people that you can't do that while also being, while not also being pro-transit. And of course, I think that the applicant probably understands well that a lot of their market around here are people who commute on a daily basis and have the vehicle for, like, weekend riders or running out for adventures and that kind of thing. And so, you're very much in putting forward a beautiful face with the building, not only helping to beautify the neighborhood for, you know, the people who are here, but also, you know, a bunch of transit riders and active transportation riders, who just because they're not in a vehicle at that time doesn't mean that they're not your actual or potential future customers. Not to mention the fact that you actually do have some people coming here for sales representation. But of course, the top items are going to be making sure we don't have fire and toxic smoke problems. I think everybody's on the same page about not wanting this place to catch on fire. And noise. And I've spent my time in 24-hour operations. I understand how important it can be to be able to operate late. I definitely feel like a good case is made so far that this is something that can operate without disturbing the neighbors across the track, which is going to be the biggest issue. And if that happens, if this is a facility that can stay open late, that is also a positive for pedestrian circulation in the area, as we want people to feel that they're going through a more active and safe area in the evening. But, yeah, no, this is a great application. It was very thorough. Appreciate that y'all were able to answer all of the questions that we had, most of the questions that we had. Does anyone have any further comment?
I just also want to reinforce, I really do think it's a good application. I've also noticed the showroom that's in Hayes Valley in San Francisco, and that has been a really wonderful amenity to that neighborhood. That's a very walkable and kind of pedestrian-oriented environment, and the showroom there really feels like it's participating in that in a really elegant way. So, I agree with my colleagues that this looks like a very positive application. It's really a matter of fine-tuning, and then the parking space is the only part I'm a little bit concerned about, but I think there's some ways to find a path forward on that.
All right. If there are no further comments, then I am going to close this item. Thank you all very much. Moving on, item nine, planning commissioner comments. Does anybody have any closing comments they'd like to make? Go ahead.
Well, it's more of a question, and this was about whether planning commissioners are allowed to attend meetings online.
Is that your whole question?
Yes.
Okay, sure, sure. I was unsure if you had asked Chad something before. So, there are limited circumstances under which you, as planning commissioners, or any public official, can attend meetings online via Zoom. Under AB 2449, those circumstances are generally related to illness or having to care for someone with a contagious illness. So, if that's the case, you know, we just ask that you alert staff as soon as possible when you know that you're going to miss a meeting for those reasons. And I can provide a reminder update. We do have a couple of new commissioners that I'm not sure have received sort of our AB 2449 outline, so I'm happy to provide that to the commission via email after the meeting. But generally, they're related to illness or caring for someone with an illness or some kind of emergency. There is also, you can also participate virtually under the traditional Brown Act rules, which require a significant advance notice because you need to post your address of where you're participating from on the face of the agenda, and the location that you participate from needs to be open to the public, and you have to post your own agenda there as well. So, yeah, there, so that is another option, and, you know, it can be done, too, if you want to participate, you know, remotely from a vacation or something like that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, it is 8:05 PM. This meeting is adjourned.